This is to advise that notice of the time, date, location, and to the extent known agenda of the subject meeting was prominently posted in the public space reserve for such or similar announcements on August 21st, 2022, transmitted to the Times, Princeton, Paken, and West Windsor and Plainsboro News on August 21st, 2022, and filed with the township clerk on August 21st, 2022. Cindy, please call the roll.
Mr. Laverro? Ms. Barrie?
Yes.
Mr. Schichtel?
Here.
Mr. Panko?
Yes.
Mr. Beg?
Yes.
Ms. Applegate? Councilwoman Mandau?
Yes.
Mayor Morata? Vice Chairman Huberman?
Here.
Chairman Carr?
Here. Okay, we have a quorum. First item on the agenda is Environmental Commission.
I'm going to be reporting on the Environmental Commission. Before I do that, I see the mayor's not here. I just want to announce that West Windsor has been ranked number 11 in the United States for Best Places for Families to Live by Fortune Magazine this morning. And I also want to mention that our farmer's market has been voted number one for New Jersey and for the Northeast and number four nationally within about the last week. So I just wanted to thank all the planning board volunteers who are on here that are part of making this happen, and I'm really proud of our town. Thanks.
Thank you. Anything else, or?
Well, it's going to go into the Environmental Commission. That was just my throwing things out.
Just a little extra stuff.
That was just a little extra. I couldn't hold that in. As far as the Environmental Commission, they have had two meetings, I believe, since our report. They've been talking about, they had a presentation on community solar, which I believe is something we've mentioned a few times here for some of the projects. And one of the vendors came in and talked about how those projects work with the Board of Public Utilities. They discussed their West Windsor Community Rain and Pollinator Gardens. There was a presentation on insect repellents. There's some projects that are being pursued on solar energy. The Sustainable Jersey Certification was submitted in August, as due, and we were submitted it for a silver level, which we hope to get. And we expect that to be presented at the Sustainable Jersey Luncheon Meeting at the League of Municipalities in November. And I want to thank the Environmental Committee and Commission and Ed Dobromilsky for all the work. Environmental Commission also did Community Day with the West Windsor Council, where they talked about the Environmental Commission composting, how to make rain gardens, native pollinator gardens. And there was also a National Drive Electric Week event that was held at the Community Day with about 30 EVs. The New Jersey DEP was there, PSE and G, and several other representatives for electric cars. And if anybody does want to see an electric car and miss the West Windsor one, there will be an exhibition in Princeton on Friday evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Portable Housing?
Okay, I was unable to attend their second meeting for the year, but they're, basically, they were just making some revisions to their operating manual from what I could see on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Next up is the minutes from August 24th. Are there any amendments, changes, observations, things that need to be looked at? From anybody?
Sorry, the minutes. August 24th?
Fourth.
Fourth, right? Just one small edit. Under reorganization should be Ms. Barrie, not Mr. Barrie.
Good, good point.
No problem.
And anything else from anybody? I'll entertain a motion to approve the August 24th.
So moved.
Okay. Moved by Georica and second by Simon, right? Oh, Anis, Anis, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alan abstains. Okay, minutes passed. Okay, next up is the resolution for PB 21-10 Carnegie Center West, Corman Corporate Suites, preliminary final major site plan and subdivision and Sixth Amendment, preliminary A site plan, block 7.13, lot 12.06. Jerry, can you please kind of summarize the resolution?
This was an application that the Board approved preliminary and final major subdivision and site plan approval, where Carnegie West, the lots were being resubdivided, also an amendment to what we call preliminary A, which was basically a GDP approval that was granted years ago before, and there was actually a statute permitting and saying there were a number of varying, and there were actually just two variances, the distance of the building, which was basically residential corporate suites, from Route 1, a number of waivers from a number of parking spaces where fewer than required were provided, signage, loading, stormwater management, lighting, and they're all laid out. And there were directed issuance of a permit for a lot not fronting on a street because the lot that was created, the Corman Suites, actually doesn't front on either Route 1 or on Canal Point Boulevard, and a number of conditions as well.
Okay, great. I know that, did everybody receive, you know, Andrea, thank you for, you know, questioning and making sure some stuff goes into the record regarding length of stay, school-aged children and so on. So did everybody receive the amended page? It's page 10?
It was emailed to everyone this afternoon when I got to hear this.
Jerry, you have the amendment, right? Can you just summarize what was added?
Sure. This is on page 10, as Mike indicated. And in the following language, it was added to paragraph 19. Fifty percent of the suites will be two bedrooms, and the applicant testified that very few school-aged children are expected to be among the residents, but based on the applicant's current portfolio of 3,200 suites, an average of 7.72 children for the 270 proposed units could be anticipated, which would include children of all ages up to 18. And that's basically it.
So what Jerry is saying is that, well, what the changes are is that just memorializing in the resolution testimony that was given on the night of the application. So there's no new information and no changes, no conditions that were added just to kind of memorialize some of the testimony that was given. Right? Okay. Are there any other changes or modifications or amendments that need to be added or changed in the language? Okay. Hearing, hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution PB 21-10 Carnegie Center West, Corman Corporate Suites.
So moved.
Moved by Andrea. Right here, second. Second by Anis. Please call the roll, please.
Ms. Barrie?
Yes.
Mr. Beg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mandau?
Yes.
Vice Chairman, excuse me, Vice Chairman Huberman?
Yes.
Chairman Carr?
Yes. Motion passes. Okay, resolutions out of the way. Okay. Next up is ordinance referral from Township Council, ordinance 2022-18 Electric Vehicle Supply Service Equipment EVSE. Yes.
That'll be May.
That's you, David.
That is May. Good evening, everybody. For the record, this is David Novak with Burgess Associates, Township Planning Consultant. Tonight, I'll be speaking on ordinance 2022-18, which pertains to what we call Electric Vehicle Supply/Service Equipment, or EVSE for short, in make-ready parking spaces. I'm not going to offer too many comments on this, although this is a new ordinance. The Board has dealt with this ordinance for quite some time, whether you realize it or not. Back on July 9th, 2021, Governor Murphy signed into law Senate Bill S. 3223, which requires, as a condition of preliminary site plan approval throughout the state, the installation of EVSE in make-ready parking spaces for really the majority of new types of development. Some of the other things that it does is allows for EVSE charging stations and make-ready spaces as an accessory use, and provided that they meet certain zoning conditions, those can be installed without needing any type of site plan approval. It would just be a permit process through your zoning department and building department. After Governor Murphy signed that into law, the Department of Community Affairs, or DCA, came up with a model ordinance to help guide municipalities to integrate these requirements into their own ordinances. Now, some of the elements of the model ordinance from DCA can be amended. Other parts can. So what we were tasked to do is look at the ordinance that DCA provided, figure out where was the best place to put it, and then consult with township staff, including your engineering department, as well as your court for penalties and fines, as well as your construction department regarding some of the design standards and construction standards for these, figure out where to put it in. So the ordinance is divided into a number of sections. Section 1 will provide some new definitions for our definition section of the ordinance, which is section 200-4. Second section of the ordinance is really the meat and potatoes, and that creates a whole new section, 200-27.1 Electric Vehicle Supply/Service Equipment. A lot of this language is taken from the DCA. We did make some modifications based on staff approval, but largely, this is consistent with the legislation that had to come out from the state. And as required by that legislation, as a condition of any type of preliminary site plan approval, make-ready parking spaces will be required for multiple dwelling or mixed-use developments. And there's a separate standard for those, as well as for other applications not covered by that separate set of EVSE and make-ready parking standards for those types of developments.
David, what do you contemplate the other kinds of developments that would apply to, other than multiple dwelling, more than five units, and mixed use?
Yeah, so that's a good question. For example, the hotel application that we just had, that would be covered under something that would not be considered residential or mixed use. If we have an application, I'm trying to think of some recent applications that we've had. There's a couple of applications in the horizon for gasoline service stations. Those would be subject to the EVSE parking requirement set forth in, I believe, on the ordinance. It would be section C2, which is on the bottom of page 5. So office, commercial developments, retail developments, self-storage facilities, anything that's not residential or mixed use.
I'm sorry. I didn't quite catch the thing you said.
Anything that's not residential or mixed use. So office, retail, commercial, so on and so forth.
Parking regulations in the township of West Windsor, are they documented somewhere?
Parking regulations, as in the?
Standard park regulations for the township of West Windsor? I don't know. I'm asking, is there documentation?
Oh, I?
Is there some authority document on parking regulations?
Yeah, section 200-27 of the ordinance has circulation and parking standards, so.
Of the ordinance?
Of our townships, yep.
So my question, my follow-up question on that is, in this section of this ordinance, where we talk about the EVSE parking, 187, page? My job of 79, 579? Okay.
Uh-oh, that's, that's an issue.
Okay, you'll catch that. No, I was wondering?
No, I think you might only have the odd pages there.
My, my, my question is, is that, I do know that the document is, is that, right? Does the parking regulation, like in D, 2D, page 7, does that need to get corroborated or cross-referenced into another parking document?
Not necessarily, because this is going to be basically within that parking document. So 200-27 is our circulation and parking. This is going to be 200-27.1. So it will be in the same site plan review section, the design details. I think you might be missing some pages, Curtis, because. I can tell you on the, the link on the agenda and on the website.
And it jumps from the E to the T.
I do assure you, there was a E and an F, but.
Yeah, we're missing every other page here.
What was that?
I'll mention it, please. Yeah.
Your document is very incomplete, yes. Well, it's odd, I'll give you that. It's an odd document. Thank you. But the? No, 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 even dangerous. I can share my laptop. You promise not to look at my tabs? I don't open.
And it was all emailed to you, like on your screen?
Yeah.
I mean, but, but say, my trust of the documents, like, in the package.
But Curtis, we did put in cross-references. No, it's a good question.
Yeah.
But to answer your question, just for the record, if you don't have it on page 6, minimum parking requirements, for example, there's a reference to section 200-27 there. So there are cross-references.
But I guess what I'm asking is, from the other end, the park reg, he provides new regulations regarding EVSE and make-ready?
No, I think they can stand alone as is, because they really deal more with how many parking spaces are required, where they can be located. This is going to be a whole new section right after that that deals specifically with EVSE. Right between our circulation and parking standards, and then 200-28 is our supplementary parking and loading space requirements. So one of the common waivers that we get in front of this board is for the number of parking spaces exceeding what's required. That's in 200-28. So this will bridge the gap between those two sections. Overall, I would find that this ordinance is consistent with our legislation from the state. I would also say that it's consistent with our land use plan as well. This township has had some longstanding goals of promoting green infrastructure and EV parking spaces. We actually have our own sustainability element as well. So I did not see anything in this ordinance that would be inconsistent with our master plan, which is another aspect of the referral process.
So in section C, where we talk about the requirements for that, it's based on required parking, right? But as the foreword, we get, we get some applications, we get a good number of applications, where the applicant exceed by easily a 15 to 100 spots of the required parking. But the, this ordinance really being based on the required parking, not on the actual parking? But, correct? Do you follow me?
Yes, no, I follow you. I'm just double checking. So you are correct. So for example, C1A would pertain to any type of multifamily developed with five or more units. And the first requirement would be to prepare as make-ready parking spaces as at least 15% of the required off-street parking spaces and install EVSE in at least one-third of them. At least one-third of the 15%.
But based on required, not actually?
For residential?
The Avalon, the Avalon, if you're putting more parking?
So for residential, yes. For anything that's not covered under residential or mixed use, I'm looking in the bottom of page 5, which would be C2A, which is to install at least one make-ready parking space if there will be 50 or fewer off-street parking spaces. To me, that would be what's being proposed in the parking lot. So it's a little bit of a difference. I would love to tell you why the legislature did that. I don't necessarily know, but for a residential one, it would be what they're proposing. And then for a, anything that's not covered under C1, it would be whatever's in the parking lot. So if they're exceeding that, then they're going to have to exceed the number of EVSE spaces that may be otherwise required.
Dave, just from my information on page 3, which I have our number anyway, the fourth line from the top, just can you clear me what this Level 2 EVSE means?
Sure, that is actually covered on page 2, which you do not have. There's a separate definition that we'll be providing in this ordinance for charging levels. And this is a language taken from the state legislation. Charging level is defined as, quote, "the amount of voltage provided to charge, and electric vehicle varies depending on the type of EVSE as follows. A Level 1 operates on a 15 to 20 amp breaker on a 120 volt AC circuit. Level 2 operates on a 40 to 100 amp breaker on a 208 or 240 volt AC circuit. Direct current fast charger, DCFC, operates on a 60 amp or higher breaker on a 480 volt or higher three-phase circuit with special grounding equipment. DCFC stations can also be referred to as rapid charging stations that are typically characterized by industrial-grade electrical outlets that allow for faster recharging of electric vehicles." So Level 2 would be operating 40 to 100 amp breaker on a 208 or 240 volt AC circuit.
But Level 1, you are talking about 15 amps and 120 volts?
Level 1 would be operating 15 to 20 amp breaker on a 120 volt AC circuit.
Oh, that will be very slow charging.
Very slow, yes. But those are the, those are the categories that the state legislature.
Days and weeks to charge, okay?
Yeah, for anybody who's curious, the Level 1, which is a 120 volt break, charger will usually do something like give you three to five miles per hour of charging. It's kind of an emergency charger, and so a lot of times, that's what comes in the trunk of your EV. A Level 2 charger is a standard home-type charger, which generally will charge most of the EVs in an eight-hour overnight stay while people are sleeping, which is usually what you want to have for something like an apartment building where somebody might put their EV there overnight and then come up to a fully charged vehicle. And the DC fast chargers are what you're seeing in Electrify America and what you're, what the, similar to the Tesla quick chargers, which will give you a pretty good amount of charge, say up to 80% in half an hour, somewhere in that range. So that's, that's generally called 1, 2, 3 in the vernacular, if you will, of chargers. So a Level 1 charger is essentially just giving somebody a regular outlet and isn't really, isn't really much of a charger. Just to put it, just to take the amps and the other stuff out of here, well, different vehicles will be able to use different amps. So if you've got a 40-amp circuit, some of the vehicles can use that. Some of them can't use the whole amount. But I will tell you that there are usually several outlets on one of those chargers. And if you've got two vehicles on a, on a 40-amp, then each one of them is getting about 20. So it's a little slower than it, than it sounds. I don't know if obscured things are cleared up to anybody who isn't?
No, that was very helpful, actually. Thank you.
And I don't believe Level 1s are considered chargers anywhere in the, in the state law. Basically, they're, they're Level 2 and above, correct? I've read this list a few times. I, I have the, my computer, if anybody wants to see the full version of the, of the law, it's on here.
Okay. Anything else there? David, you go ahead.
Yeah, if I just made a comment about this, we've been essentially following this legislation since last year. This codifies it for West Windsor. So we're not, we haven't lost anything by not having it. But this way, it's on a West Windsor code, and it makes it a little easier for us to, us to apply because it is part of ours. And I'm, I'm kind of happy that it does work out with National Drive Electric Week, that we've been working on this thing.
Exactly. It's, it's, that's a great point. We have been enforcing this already. It's an interesting concept because it is an ordinance that we have to adopt, but I don't think this board can actually grant waivers from the required number of EVSE parking spaces. But that being said, we were able to include some additional clarifying language regarding certain safety aspects, and that was under the design standards that we'd worked out with your construction department, so.
And I'd like to thank them for all the work, everybody who worked on this.
Yep.
And, you know, made it not better and, and added some protections to it and some definitions.
I have a question. I mean, are we going to vote on this then, today? I'm just questioning the appropriateness of voting on something that we don't have the entire material.
That's a, that's, that's a, that's a hairy question.
I mean, a mistake was made in my office, I understand that. Everything was emailed to folks. And I don't know if anybody looked at it until tonight, because if you did, you would have alerted me, and I'm going to be able to bring copies tonight to give out to everybody on that. But I guess it's a call for Jerry, otherwise we have a meeting next week for 15 minutes.
Are you sure this was emailed? I mean, I would love this to go, but it just to be a, was this emailed? Because I was just looking through the mail.
It was emailed with the agenda that Lisa sent out to everybody.
The original one?
And it said that we're also going to be sending, mailing out hard copies, too.
Okay, because I, because I couldn't find, it wasn't emailed out with the resolution. So that might have been a separate. Thank you.
Now, when Martina sent this to your office, and did she copy all the members of the Board?
That's actually. Talking about two different things. We're talking about the resolution, and we're talking about the EV ordinance. The resolution was emailed to everybody today at 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock, whenever I got it from you. And an email, it said, "If you want a hard copy, let Lisa know so she could print it out and leave it in your folder." So I don't know whether anybody called Lisa, and if she did, it should be in your folder for the resolution.
I don't think I got that.
I don't see it on the 22nd. Okay, I'm looking at the 21st, there was an agenda and a sunshine document sent. And then on the 22nd, there was a resolution of memorialization before it was modified in the last couple of days. There was draft minutes, and there was a tract resolution of memorialization. Do you know what date this was mailed?
I do not, but I guess it's up to Jerry. Do we want to repeat this next week then for 15 minutes?
I mean, I'd love to have this passed, but I would like it to be with the, you know.
I, I think that given that it was available, I think that given that it was available on the website, the Board can go ahead.
Okay.
So, so most of the?
Public comment?
Okay.
What, what do you want to?
Would any member of the public wish to comment on the EV ordinance? Please step up to the mic. Don't rush, there'll be a. Don't rush, there'll be a turn for everybody. Um, okay, hearing no public comments. I have a question. I. I'm going to say that I did not receive this. Because I, I don't have it. And I think it, I think some of the other board members are in the same boat as me, right? I see, I see nodding those heads.
Mike, if we want to hold for fifteen minutes, I'll run over to town hall. I'll print out a copy of it, bring it all back to you so you get a fifteen minute bathroom break.
And, 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 and that's fine. I was looking for a record, uh, early close, but I'm willing to wait to fifteen minutes.
That's, that's a good idea.
That's a good idea. Because I look through.
Sam, let, let me follow up on, on what I was asking earlier about the email from Martina. Or may, maybe it was from David, um, and then included some language. Relating to the university that the university decided it really didn't need it. It didn't go to anyone.
I'm sorry, Wayne.
Did you want to just stand closed for fifteen minutes while I?
Sure, um, meaning we're going to take a fifteen minute break.
Everybody, I can't turn this off, otherwise I need to stay, so it's still.
Okay.
Same with mine, too.
Oh, it's on the website.
Yeah, that's where you got it from. Oh, yeah, yes, right.
So I've had.
I didn't get it.
I hear you. Yeah, but I, I, I opened up everything I'm.
And I was going to be thanks, I was looking at the.
I didn't get it. Okay, well, I opened up very content to me.
None of, nobody, nobody.
Yeah, oh, in the glow before done. That's not for a smart race this Sunday. Are you? Yes. Where? Uh, I'm looking at. Well, it'll be, it's. Yeah, absolutely. I, I don't know. Yeah, and I, uh, my whole life. I didn't know before, and I.
Yeah, very. Ford and Cap Chamberlain test. Oh, she's going to be a washout. Girlfriend of mine, she got up Saturday morning, went to see the sunrise. That was. Yes. Five thirty.
Did anyone spread that my name?
No, no, I. So I do the backwards, yeah. Yeah. Seventy seven. Yeah, it's, it's, it was beautiful. It was really, really beautiful. It was worth it. Definitely worth it. Cut it out.
So who would sprint while the others would sit in the. Yeah.
I love it.
I love it. That's awesome. I didn't realize that that group was so. So. Yeah, I'm here to tell. Yeah.
They do charge. Yeah, you know what trees are. Twenty nine thousand.
When, when you're that.
So Battle of Princeton actually occurred in what was then West Windsor. And it was a jungle land and actually was encountering Princeton. That had been in West Windsor. And I have no idea why this happened.
They had. And everything bird, bird. Overall, yeah. But they had. Yeah, I've seen pictures of it. I will say. Bigger than.
Thank you.
Oh, really?
You know, like a sightseeing, so. Oh, my gosh, yeah.
Be the, the difference in.
Wasn't there a, I think it was.
East and west, yeah, it was. No, but I, I mean. When Jersey gets reported, I mean, I would say. If you don't enjoy. If you, or if you're saying if you join. And people would just. They will.
I don't like.
But, but, but if you just.
Where is it? We got it. No, you can, you can. You got, everybody's trying to look through it. We're looking through it. Okay, um. Okay, everybody should be back, uh. Looking over the EV ordinance. Um. I, I. I have a question about it. Is, uh, is a lot of, um. There's a lot of. I guess, uh, documentation regarding. Having EV spaces. Is there? I don't see where is, is there a certain percentage of EV spaces that has to be? Um. On streets or in parking lots or part of applications?
Um, the parking requirements for EVSE, um, established in section three would deal specifically with parking garages and. Uh, parking lots typically. So. Uh, you'd be taking either, uh. In the case of a residential or mixed use development. A percentage of whatever is required. And then working out from there. Or for any of the other types of uses, um. Involving a parking lot or a garage. Almost like we do with ADA, bless you, almost like we do with ADA standards. Breaking it up into different categories. So for example, if there's less than fifty or fifty or fewer parking spaces, installing at least one there. And then it kind of builds from different categories. So really looking at parking lots and parking garages.
So for parking lots and parking garages in mixed use development. Let's say they're required based on the formula to have two hundred. Spots. Is there ten percent have to be EV? Is it twenty percent? Is it ten?
It would be, uh, fifteen. So C one A prepares make ready parking spaces at least. Fifteen percent of the required off street parking spaces. So fifteen percent. So in the example of two hundred. You would have thirty required EVSE spaces.
Okay.
And then there's additional standards for how many of those need to be constructed right away.
Okay.
What needs to be constructed within one third or one year, but so it kind of goes on from there.
So, so, but, so just for clarity purposes. You do the formula, has to be two hundred total parking spaces. After that, you say, okay, there's two hundred total parking spaces. Of that. Fifteen percent or thirty have to be EV spaces.
Yes.
Okay.
They have to be, uh, ma- uh, make ready spaces and then there's a.
And then there's a.
A phase in, and the other thing that should be in here, that's in here. Is that under state law. Every EV space counts as two spaces.
Yes.
Um, for, uh, we, parking requirements.
Yes, that is in there as well. That was a.
And that's in the state law, whether, whether that makes sense or not.
So that, that's confusing to me. I'm sorry. So if you do the calculation of two hundred spaces, because this application has so many units or so many square feet, and so it comes out to two hundred parking spaces required. Then you do the EV calculation, fifteen percent that becomes thirty. Does that mean that you're saying it's one and a half spaces for every?
No, only, only up to ten percent of your required number of parking spaces. So. What this does, and I would have. If I was to guess why the legislation was written like this, it was probably some sort of incentive. For developers to want to install these types of spaces.
Okay.
Um, because otherwise they're going to have a larger upfront cost. Maybe this is a way to offset. Future paving costs, but. You are entitled to a bonus of two parking spaces for each EVSE unit. So it counts as one parking sp- or two parking spaces. Up to ten percent of your required number of parking spaces, which would presumably lower the required number of non EVSE or make ready parking spaces you would have in your parking lot.
So in this case of two hundred thirty being EV, that would lower the requirement to one eighty, I guess, or ten percent of two hundred?
You would have the, if your parking requirement was two hundred spaces. You would have the, if your parking requirement was 200 spaces, you would have to have 30 EVSC parking spaces. 20 of those could count double.
Double.
So typically you would have to have 30 EVSC parking spaces or make ready parking spaces and 170 non. But you can subtract 20 away from that. So it would be 30 plus the one.
One, one, so net, one, it goes to 180 is basically, okay.
But that's, but that's a requirement. Uh, if we, we, if we require X number of spaces, that's not to say that they don't come back and say, hey, we know we need more parking.
Exactly.
And we can do that, but we can't force them to do more than whatever the law is and not get that credit.
Right. So they, they get the credit. They say, okay, my requirement's 180, but I think I need more than 180. I'm going to add another, you know, 30, 40, whatever it may be. And so that's fine. You know, they'll ask. At that point, do they have to ask for a waiver?
They would still have to ask. If they're over the required number of parking spaces, they would still have to request a waiver from this board for exceeding the minimum or maximum number of parking spaces.
Okay. And I would, I don't know, I would, I would, I would grant it because they know what they need. So that would be my view.
And we've had different strategies in the past. Sometimes we ask if they want to, or if they're able to bank certain spaces. Um, so it's always a case by case basis.
And in fact, we did that calculation for, for common sweets.
Yes, we did.
Uh, Dave. On page, page six. E. Uh, just, I'm confused. I mean, you are saying more than 150 spaces. We need at least four percent of total parking spaces. Say the spaces, say we need 200 we have. Okay. So four percent of that would be eight percent, eight.
Where, where, which number?
I'm page six on E.
E, so.
Am I, am I right when you said at least five percent of which shall be accessible? This means five percent of four percent we are talking.
Oh, it's the five percent of the four percent. So.
Yeah. So, so this means if I have 200 spaces, four percent of that will be eight and five percent of eight will be nothing practically.
Uh, you would still round up. So this is again, this is on page six, it's item E. So install at least four percent of the total parking spaces as make ready parking spaces. At least five percent which would be available, accessible for people with disabilities if there's over 150. So if there's a parking lot for an office development that requires 200 parking spaces, at least four percent of those would have to be EVSC. So you're correct. It would be eight EVSC or make ready parking spaces.
On five percent of eight?
Of five percent of that would be point four. You would have to round that up to one. So one of the ADA parking spaces you'd have on your site would also have to be, uh, EVSC. So we have, did have a recent example of that with the JDN application. They required a certain number of EVSC parking spaces and of those, as five percent, I believe it was, were reserved for, uh, charging facility, for, uh, ADA EV parking spaces. So it has popped up before. It makes the math very difficult and annoying, but you would round up in that circumstance.
So you mean that point one, you round up to one then?
Yeah, exactly. Yes.
So is it reasonable to expect that or do we need to spell it out?
No, it's, it's spelled out in here and we would require them to do that no matter what. And that's not in addition to the required number of EVSC parking spaces they already, I'm sorry. Not in addition to the required number of ADA parking spaces they already have as well. So it gets even a little bit more confusing because you have ADA requirements, making sure that this does not necessarily impede on those ADA requirements as well.
Why don't you say at least minimum one, at least? I mean, otherwise someone. Point one has very close to zero. Just forget about.
It, it's, I thought there was language in here. Fraction. This is also the part of the ordinance that we're not supposed to be able to edit from the state as well. So in the DCA model ordinance, there's certain areas that you're not supposed to, um, edit. This is one of them. I don't know if it would be a substantial edit. Um, but I think it's kind of implied that there would have to be at least one part, one ADA space there.
Okay.
It's certainly the way that I would interpret it in the other professionals as well.
And is there anything in the ordinance regarding on-street EV spaces or open spaces to be converted to EV, EV only designated parking on, on street?
No, this is really more geared towards parking lots and parking garages. Um, it does leave municipalities the option of whether or not you want to install EVSC in some of your public parking lots. And if so, also allows you to charge your fee for that as well.
And, and there are in a number of towns that charge particularly for on-street parking where they're putting, uh, street side EV chargers. And then that becomes like an additional charge. But, um, I don't think we have any place in West Windsor where we charge anybody to park on the street. So at this point, we're.
No, I don't think so either.
No, maybe by the train redevelopment, there might be someday or, I don't know. Okay, um, any, any other comments on, on the EV ordinance? Anybody? Okay. Um, Jerry, we're voting on this.
Well, the, the vote would be a motion to, um, to approve or send it back to council. Pass it back to council and making, recommend approval and make a determination that it's consistent with the master plan. Okay, can, um, I'll make a motion to recommend approval.
Okay, motion by Andrea, second by Alan. Please call the roll.
Ms. Bari?
Yes.
Mr. Shiktel?
Yes.
Mr. Panko?
Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mandel?
Yes.
Vice Chairman, Huberman?
Yes.
Chairman Carr?
Yes. Motion, motion carries to send it back to council approval. Thank you. Um, next item is, um, public comments. Anybody from the public wish to speak on a non-agenda item? Okay, remember that's non-agenda. Don't rush to the microphone on any agenda items. Do I hear anybody? Do I see anybody going once, going twice? Okay. There's no public comments. Um, I'll entertain a motion, um, to close the public hearing and have, uh, uh, Jerry will need to talk to us about some things. So.
So moved.
Motion to close the public hearing by Simon, second by Anis. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
And I believe you, you would need a motion, Mike, to go into closed session.
Okay.
The closed session.
Well, right. Well, I just closed the public hearing. I'll, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Um, I'm sorry, motion by Alan, second by Anis. All in favor, say aye. Okay, so we're now in closed session. Uh, video will be ending at, uh, at the end of the public session as we're now in closed session.